Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present. And with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So we will go ahead and move on to public comment. Mayor Protem.
It looks like we have one in-person sign up and no virtual signups for public comment. So Jubert Barrios, I believe it is. Thank you. Will you come to the stand? And then you have your two-minute timer to your left there.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jubert Barrios. I basically live at 519 Washington Street over here in the historic district. Since you guys basically put the restrictions in place to for the handicap people, basically you reduce it to every four hours. My questioning to you is, how can you expect a handicapped person to come down two to three times a day just to move their car? That's the reason why a handicap sticker is given to a handicapped person. Me myself, I am disabled. I'm gonna have two operations coming. I'm gonna need my car near where I live. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because for the last time since you guys put this in place, I don't know if you guys read this and you guys approved of the legal basically extortion of money of people of low income. The reason why I say that is because a ticket on average is, say, seventy-five dollars, okay? And you guys put signs up right in front of my place that says, "Don't park near a corner." But then there's no marking on the floor. It's basically just pavement. No white, no red, no nothing, okay? On top of that, the reason why I'm here is because recently I had gotten into a confrontation, a verbal confrontation, basically with the meter maids, okay? A meter maid approached me. I was delivering more than a thousand dollars' worth of Pampers to the building where I live, okay? Half of those people are bedridden. So I do these things and I don't ask for money. I do it out of necessity of the people where I live. Because I live there and I myself am disabled, like I said. Now, I came over, they gave me a seventy-five-dollar ticket. They tried to basically have my car towed away after I had already had a conversation with the meter maid that I was doing this for necessity purposes and reasons. I've also gotten tickets just for unloading my groceries. And then I've even gone to the court and I actually protested against the court. That's a scaling judge. Because right there, you basically have to agree to their terms, otherwise they ain't gonna hear you. And so where else you gonna go? You know, so I gotta agree to this-
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrios. Your time is up. Thank you.
See?
If you haven't finished your comments, feel free to send them to us via email if you would like. Any questions or comments from the dais? Mayor Protem, win.
Mr. Barrios, hi. Sorry, this portion is not supposed to be a back and forth, but I just wanted to make sure that you stayed around for, you know, perhaps what the impact you have of coming to speak. We always appreciate it when people come and give public comment to us. And while it's not a two-way dialogue, you know, we do actually listen to you, I like to think. And so hopefully you can stay around to hear council comments and then see if there's staff that might be able to assist you with your situation.
Great. I appreciate that. And I also have names, basically, that the customer service gave me. I've also got into a verbal argument with Garth, one of your supervisors, and basically he ran away from me. All right? When I try to explain myself, I need to be heard.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will stay.
Sure. Okay, so with that, just quick comments. I do appreciate you coming tonight. And as well, it sounds like a pretty frustrating situation. And there is, you know, with parking, just throughout the city, there is a strategy with like why we do things the way that we do them. And yeah, you're right, we do look at things and improve them. And sometimes we then hear what the impacts are and we can make improvements, right? Or at least better share the information and help resolve issues that come across. And so I'd be interested, after council, any other council members get a chance to weigh in to see if we could connect staff. We have our community planning and development director, Leonard Bauer, here that oversees all of parking services. And so hopefully you two can get together while you're right here and he can share some information. So that's all from me. Thanks so much for coming tonight.
All right. Will do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments? Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'm just, I'm thinking about as we were developing the parking strategy, that there was quite a bit of interest from the boardwalk building about this particular change. And maybe, I don't know if land use is already scheduled to get another parking update, but it'd be good to hear how it's going downtown for folks with, broadly with people with a handicap parking.
Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Madron.
I will say yes and to both the Mayor Protem and my councilmate. And also having a mother who, for her entire adult life, had to have a handicap parking. Anything that we can do to improve or any unintended consequences that we should pay attention to, I'm in support. Because I know how difficult it can be for someone who literally takes twenty minutes to get out of the car, has to go upstairs, and then come back down.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I recall when these changes were made around parking, not just the boardwalk apartments, but I heard from constituents as well, in terms of their concerns around accessibility. And I know it's something that we should, I'm pretty sure we have it on our work plan to get an update on downtown parking stuff. But this is also something that I think that we could look into more. We could ask our staff to look into more. I know I've asked to see, how do other cities address this? And so I think we could actually specifically put that on the land use work plan, you know, pending our meeting this week, to talk with staff around capacity and stuff like that. But this is something that has been on my mind since we've made those changes. And I'm sure that there is some kind of solution out there to support folks with accessibility needs. And like, these are changes we made before we had a really strong equity focus as a city. And so it's something that needs to be reevaluated.
Thank you all very much. Okay, so with that, we will move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. I am tracking two pulls this evening. 4C, which will be pulled for a separate action, and also 4E, which is a resolution authorizing the purchase agreement with Hughes Fire Equipment for two Lifeline ambulances. Any other pulls in the consent calendar? Okay. So with that, I will call up Chief Morris to speak to us on the pull for 4E.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're deciding to answer any questions that you may have regarding 504D, the resolution.
Councilmember Gilman.
I asked to have this pulled for a couple of points of clarification. One was, I understand that the chassis and the drivetrain are not included. So if you could give us a ballpark on that. And then, could you describe the purchase of these two in the context of our standing up the BLS and OFD cares?
Absolutely. I appreciate the question. So, yeah, the chassis were purchased separately because of the chassis shortage in the United States the last couple of years. And the city had, was only allocated one. So we purchased that one earlier in '23. And we just purchased the second because the supply systems caught up. So those both were, the first one was seventy-five thousand, the second was eighty thousand for the two chassis. The one we have in possession, the other one is on its way. So once they both arrive, we'll have the two chassis delivered to Lifeline for the boxes and the configuration to be built. They're being built to the same spec as the Thurston County Medic One. So we were able to keep some of the cost down because we didn't make a lot of changes to that. It is part of the BLS transport program that was previously approved by council. The cost, the total cost allocated was eight-hundred-six thousand amongst the total cost of the BLS program. So we're gonna be right on target for that for the two ambulances.
Any other questions or comments on 4D for the fire chief? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, all those in favor of adopting the consent calendar minus 4C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent calendar is adopted. All right. So with that, we will move on to 4C, for a motion and a discussion on the council meeting calendar and council assignments. So with that, I need a motion to approve the council committee meeting calendar and committee assignments.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem, win.
Yeah, I'd like to, would now be an appropriate time to speak to the point about two-year terms for committees?
Not yet. We're just moving to adopt the council meeting calendar and committee assignments.
Oh, well, I better hold my horses.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. So now we will move on to a motion to approve the two-year terms or duration for the committee assignments and interjurisdictionals. So I need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem, win.
Yeah, thank you. So for the two years for committee assignments, including interjurisdictionals, it's my understanding that currently in the council guidebook, that committee chair, there's some thought to having two-year terms for committee chairs and the Mayor Protem position, in which they could re-up and have another two-year term. But then, just to have some stability there. And so I got to a good place on that. But then thinking about now revising it, so, or at least updating it so that we include all interjurisdictionals, I do think that's a layer of bureaucracy that's not needed. There is, it's written with some flexibility in mind that it's two years, but then we can adjust as needed. And I feel like with our council, we're getting really good at navigating conflicts. And I think it's an opportunity, an opportunity to continue working that muscle. And then also to just, to bring it up so that council members can have the opportunity to speak about their interjurisdictionals, ones that they're interested in, ones that they might need some support on, or might need to do a little bit of shuffling. I also recognize that at any given time, you know, we could have a new member, we could have, we could have some flexing that needs to be done. So I don't see it as a hard rule, and so that it's tough for me to get behind that one. I also, yeah, I think there's just a natural kind of tension that comes up when we're a body of seven really passionate people that care a lot about the good work to be done on these different council committees and interjurisdictionals. And then also, you know, we have different interests and expertise and then, and trying to find that right balance. So I think it's a good conversation. And as far as thinking about two years or not, I think that we can just have that be a part of the conversation and the consideration, and we don't need to add it to the council guidebook. I was really, I think, impressed about this last retreat. Overall, I think that we just did a good job navigating that conversation. Again, I think things will naturally come up between the years, and so I don't see it as a hard rule. And I do think it's a needed layer of bureaucracy. Something that I am interested in is checking in with the regional organizations for the interjurisdictional bit, and seeing what their bylaws say as far as their preference of like term limits. So I know that on the Economic Development Council Board, for instance, they really want someone there for three years. So I'd love to maybe add a column to the interjurisdictionals and assignments and put that consideration in for what the organizations need regionally, so we can be good partners. Anyways, thanks for hearing me out. But that's why I'll be voting no tonight on this one.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Madron.
I just wanted to add some additional context to all of this. You know, at our retreat last year, we actually discussed this in-depth, you know, as whether or not to do appointments for one year or for two years for all of our committee and interjurisdictional assignments. And we did, at that time, you know, not make, take an official vote because it wasn't a business meeting, but a majority of us, all but one, granted, we have a new person here now, so you weren't there, Robert, did decide that that's what we wanted to do. And it was supposed to be ratified in the council guidebook. And it was just an oversight that it wasn't. Right now, there's actually a conflict in the council guidebook where we appoint a committee chair for two years, but they're actually only appointed to that committee for one year and like, as a member of that committee. So I just want to give that context that this is a decision that has been discussed and somewhat made, but not fully ratified. And I think that's actually unfortunate, because I think we spent a lot of unnecessary time having some of these conversations. And that was, you know, one of the reasons that this came up to begin with. So I am supportive of us adopting our committee assignments for two years and updating the council guidebook with the conversation that was reflected before.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I have a procedural question. If we put this in our guidebook, is it then a rule that requires two-thirds vote to override and do something different?
I don't believe so. I think it's just majority vote.
So it's not a suspension of the rules to go away from the council guidebook? So we can do that with a simple majority every time?
Here tonight.
Or anytime.
Yeah, anytime that you want to make a change to your guidebook.
Okay. So if, in, so if we wrote it into the guidebook at retreat, it still would only take four people to support shifting people around as they need based on their schedule? Okay. So with that, then I'm in support of it being in the guide.
Yes. And with that, I'll just add a point of clarification that these are not term limits that we are discussing. We're talking about two years of assignment duration, at which time we could choose to re-up if we want to stay on that assignment or not. And it also doesn't mean that we can't revisit the discussion around exchanging assignments annually. So we can still have that discussion, but it's, from this action tonight, we're understanding that we are committing ourselves to two years, should it pass. Okay. So with that, I have a motion in a second to approve the two-year terms for committee assignments and interjurisdictionals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, six one. Okay, so with that, we will move on to item 6A, which is a presentation on the approval for the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project artists, which will be presented to us by Stephanie Johnson, our Arts Commission staff liaison, and Kathy Dorgan, the Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and members of council. Again, for the record, I'm Stephanie Johnson, Arts Program and Planning Supervisor, Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation. And I'm here with Kathy Dorgan, who is our brand-new Arts Commission Chair. So her first council meeting. And we're here today with an artist recommendation for the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project. You may recall that this project was built, literally, around a ten-foot-by-twenty-three-foot steel water tank existing on the property that offered the potential to redirect salvage material for creative reuse and the opportunity for deeper connection to the recent history of the site. The project includes creation of an approximately six-by-ten-foot-tall bird blind, so that visitors can watch birds without being seen by them, and two entry markers at Harrison Avenue and Kaiser Road from the repurposed steel. This public art project is tied to planned park improvements, including an asphalt bicycle and pedestrian use shared trail, shared-use trail, a parking area on Kaiser Road connecting to Harrison Avenue to the south, and a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot-long boardwalk where the trail crosses over a category-one wetland, the reason for the bird blind. Grass Lake Nature Park's primary functions are wildlife protection, wildlife viewing, and environmental education.
On December 14th, 2023, commissioners reviewed the jury recommendation of three semifinalists from seven applications received for the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project. Prior to interviews which were conducted on Wednesday, January 3rd, one of the finalists removed their application due to an already ambitious work schedule. Following the two interviews, the jury unanimously recommended Abe Singer for the project. Nature is an inspiration in Mr. Singer's work, and he is well-versed in the use of repurposed materials. He articulated a strong resonance to the redevelopment vision and relationship to the environment and materials, speaking to accessibility, ways to connect, and a strong appreciation for the tank and its possibility. The Arts Commission reviewed the recommendation on January 11th and moved unanimously to forward to city council for consideration. Here are the images Mr. Singer submitted with his application, which was included in your staff report. Metamorphosis is a large-scale interpretation of a local camus wildflower with a caterpillar at the base of the stem and a butterfly poised on the uppermost blossom. It reflects a new city finding its identity. Mr. Singer cites his finding his identity as an artist. The caterpillar's face is made from a repurposed propane tank, and the body segments are made from an iron pipe hand-forged into shape. Each of the flower petals was hammered into shape by hand. The butterfly's wing pattern is achieved through negative space. Beyond the surface, we'll welcome you to Pathways Park, a newly redesigned nature park based, nature-based park in Seattle focused on accessibility and inclusiveness. Featuring three tall lily pads, flower, frog, and tadpole, this sculpture transports the viewer into a new underwater world. Installation coming soon. Inspired by a bark-like natural beauty in the heavily rusted exterior of an old culvert pipe unearthed at a job site, Mr. Singer was able to give it a new life as the main trunk and boughs of the sculpture. Additional branches were fabricated from steel tubing. Both have a rust patina and polymer resin coat. Rockfish was designed as a recycle depository to keep plastic bottles off our beaches and city streets. It embraces the beauty of the metal's natural patina. The squirrel work was hand-forged and bent. The head and face were fabricated from a single sheet of weathering Flowing curves, fluid motion, and attention to detail highlight the beauty and grace of this fearsome predator. It showcases Mr. Singer's ability to sculpt heavy-gauge steel into elegant forms and camouflage structural supports by incorporating them into the artwork. This collaborative sculpture by Jennifer Coons and Mr. Singer illustrates the Floridum Garden Club's mission to cultivate a love for gardening, nature, and the outdoors. Commissioned by the Floridum and generously donated to the city of Edmonds in celebration of the club's centennial year. The base of the mirror in reflection is fabricated from salvaged propane tanks and formed iron pipe. If approved, following the contract process, the schedule for design development and approval is noted on the slide. The question before you is to move to approve Abe Singer as the project artist for the Grass Lake Nature Park and direct staff to move forward in the project.
Thank you very much, Chair Dorgan. Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Protem, win.
Absolutely beautiful. Just amazing. I just want to read out loud because this so fits some of our lenses. This is our climate analysis of the project. Utilizing repurposed material from the site reduces the need for virgin materials and the associated carbon use of processing and transportation. Fantastic. Just amazing. And then I have to steal Councilmember Cooper's question. The tank is empty, right?
That was a joke. Thank you, Mayor Payne. I am so excited. Not only am I overwhelmingly in support of the artist, I'm really excited to see the park project come together. Councils before us had their priorities out of whack, and they took money out of this project for other reasons in the CFP. And it's just really, really great to see it all starting to come together and can't wait to see it in real life on the ground. So thank you for the work to bring us this recommendation.
I lost track. Mayor Protem, win, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, thank you so much for this tonight. No unique words from me here, just more praise. Really, really exciting. It's nice to have things on our agenda that we can't wait to say yes to. Yeah, so I mean, there is, for me, there is no good reasons here to not approve this tonight. I mean, that would just be weird. It is just gorgeous. And it also takes quite a bit of effort to also connect with artists that would be right for the project too, right? So pretty exciting. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
This is my first project to approve. So I'm happy that it is a project that helps both improve the arts, but also walkways and paths in our parks. I hope all of the things I have to prove for the next two years are this joyful. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Vanderpool. Most of them are, and we've seen some of the work previously from this artist. And it's just so incredible and so fantastic. One of my favorites is the one, the giant mirror that reflects the caterpillar and the butterfly. I think that's just so cool. Yeah, so really excited to support this artist and cast my vote tonight. So with that, I need a motion. Mayor Protem.
Everyone can't wait for this one. I had, a thoughtful colleague gave me the motion sheet, so I got excited about this. I wonder if we might ask our newest council member to move for this one? How would you feel about that?
That's a great idea. Councilmember Vanderpool, item 6A.
I move to approve the Grass Lake Nature Park Art Project Artist move, sorry, move to approve Art Commission Recommendation Abe Singer as the Grass Lake Nature Park Project Artist.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will move on to item 6B. And I believe you two are staying put for this one as well, which is-
It's the two for today, so hopefully the second project is as good as the first.
Yes. So this is item 6B, an approval of a gift of art proposal commemorating the West Olympia Rotary fifth anniversary, fiftieth anniversary, which will be presented to us once again by Stephanie Johnson, our Arts Commission staff liaison, and Kathy Dorgan, the Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission.
Thank you again, Mayor Payne and members of council. Again, Stephanie Johnson, Arts Program and Planning Supervisor, Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation, with our Arts Commission Chair Kathy Dorgan. And we also have West Olympia Rotary Club President Katia Miltemore with us in the audience. So if you have any questions for her at the end of the presentation, she is here for them. So the Olympia West Bay Rotary Club turns 50 on May 25th, 2025, and they have chosen to mark the occasion in a really wonderful way. The West Olympia Rotary Club has had a long relationship with West Bay Park, and they have been a major partner, along with other Rotary Clubs, in the development of the Overlook Handheld Boat Launch and other improvements that make the park a destination for kayakers and canoeists, Bud Bay watchers, dog walkers, et cetera. And for their anniversary, they have proposed a gift of art.
The proposed donation of artwork is a cedar sculpture to be created by Salish Carver and Squaxton Island Tribal Member Taylor Kreis, entitled "Life is Water." With this gift, the West Bay Rotary Club acknowledges the importance to many members of their club to recognize that the park is located in the ancestral lands of the Squaxton Island Tribe. They note in their proposal attached to your staff report, "This piece represents the importance of water in the life of our city, and it is an appropriate piece to be located at West Bay Park, with its marine exposure, view of the port, and a historic location important to native tribes and their culture." Members of the Arts Commission reviewed this proposal at their January 11 meeting and unanimously moved to- and unanimously moved to forward it to City Council for your consideration.
If the gift of art donation is approved by the City Council, the city of Olympia would receive the donation by agreement, transferring ownership to the city without terms, conditions, or restrictions other than the specific location at West Bay Park and the artist's request for a Salish blessing and drum circle at the dedication ceremony as noted in the attached proposal. The motion before you is to move to approve the proposed gift of art "Life is Water" by Taylor Kreis as a donation to the city's public art collection and direct staff to place on a future consent calendar an ordinance approving acceptance of the donation and the gift of art agreement.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Gilman.
I just wanted to appreciate and recognize West Olympia Rotary for raising the funds and having the vision to create another beautiful piece to add to West Bay Park, which I call West Bay Rotary Park, and I don't know if that's the actual name.
Councilmember Parshley.
Well, is that piece, the art, is that actually the mock-up of what's going to be carved?
Yeah, this is a two-dimensional, two-dimensional rendering of three-dimensional piece. So if you can imagine, the image was kind of flattened, uncurved and flattened, that's what you see.
Absolutely gorgeous, and I commend the Rotary Club for acknowledging the relationship of our local tribe members to this area. So very, very enlightened. Thank you. And thank you for the gift.
Councilmember Madron.
I was gonna do...
Yes.
Did you have something to say?
Followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Oh, I was gonna do the motion, so if he has some...
Councilmember Cooper.
Oh, okay. Well, I first want to say that, as, as Councilmember Gilman said, really huge thanks to the West Olympia Rotary Club for this. This is super cool, and it's also, you know, it's another Squawson artist that's going to be showcased in our community, and I just love seeing that grow. It's super cool. And so if we're ready, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve "Life is Water" by Taylor Wiley Kreis as a donation to the city public art collection from the West Olympia Rotary Club and direct staff to place on a future consent calendar an ordinance approving acceptance of the donation and gift of art agreement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any additional comments from the council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I was just gonna say that as we get closer to a design of the installation, it might be good to incorporate some sort of cover or kiosk cover over it to keep it out of the weather since it will be wood. Is there a plan for that?
We do have several cedar carvings in the collection already, and the best conservator recommendation is to have a metal piece, almost like flashing, on the top of it so that the water doesn't go down through the end rings. And then we also make sure to have the wood lifted an inch or so from the ground so that it doesn't wick up water like a candle wick. But we don't, it's not in their budget, and it's not in our budget to provide a covering for the piece.
No, that makes perfect sense. You're just sealing the top like you would a roof, and, and that keeps the elements out without providing an annoyance to the beauty.
And in addition, we seal all of our wood carvings on it through your rotation cycle.
Perfect. Thanks for bringing this.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just add that I'm really excited to see this piece in person. The word that comes to mind when I look at it is reverence. It just makes me feel like I should humble myself when I look at it. So it's beautiful. Can't wait to see it. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So with that, we will move on to item 6C, which is to receive a briefing on the city's affordable home ownership study, which will be presented to us by Paul Knox from Knox Works Consulting and Sam Green from Northwest Cooperative Development Center.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. Krista Lenson from the city of Olympia. And I have with me Paul Knox and Sam Green, who are consultants on this project. And I'm just gonna kick it right over to them for presenting.
Great. Thanks, Krista. So we're gonna tag-team this. I'll probably talk more than Sam because I got a bigger mouth. But we're excited to do this. We've been working on this since last summer, and I'll just say, Mayor and council, I'm really excited to be putting this forward to you. It's something I have a lot of personal passion about. It's really opened my eyes about the home ownership piece of affordable housing more than, than I knew before, and it's been fun working with your fine housing staff on this as well. So, so I'm gonna start out saying a couple things. This is a quick slideshow. I want to hear, we want to hear some discussion and questions. We'd love to hear your priorities afterwards. We did, we did set this up. I suggested that instead of just this be the end, that we'll actually meet with the Land Use and Environment Committee next month so that we can kind of move it forward in some ways, and we can, we can go a little more depth with them. So we're looking forward to that. So this is set up as a report to you, and this is kind of our final report, but not all the Ts crossed, et cetera, et cetera. So, do you have anything to add? Okay. All right. See, I can do this at the same time. So, and I'm not gonna read all these, you'll probably appreciate that. This is the swell of it. We started last, I guess it says June, I think we really started in July, but we just kept moving through this. We've taken a lot of information, a lot of stakeholders. I'm gonna go to the next one. Over 15 reports that we looked at, they're in the briefing document you got with links. We also talked, it was very much an iterative process of digging out some information, starting assembling some really actionable strategies that the city could take, and then meeting with a number of smart people, state, some national and local, to kind of wade through these and come up with what, what really makes sense. And we talked to a whole range of folks, realtors, master builders, affordable housing people, some of your, your staff leaders, and many other folks that are doing this work around the state, statewide leaders of the Housing and Finance Commission, et cetera. So that really helped us, I feel like, get really smart about this and then try to focus in on what, what can be most effective here. We refined them as we went, et cetera. So as with affordable housing, you need to be aggressive on a lot of fronts. It's not just one answer, and as you can imagine, and, you know, the, there's a lot of good reasons to do homeownership, and, look at those. So the overall goal is increase access to, for low and moderate income, I use that LMI thing as a shortfall. Homeownership is to overcome intergenerational inequities, build wealth, and build better communities and neighborhoods in our city. And this is a really key thing. And also increase the supply of, housing is really gonna be critical, and it can't be just what past generations had with their single-family homes. We really have to look more creatively because of the cost issues around townhouses, multiplexes, co-ops, even, even with, with lot splitting, even, even ADUs can be for homeownership. So we just have to think differently than what most of this community is now for homeownership. We also need to engage all sectors. For instance, the other, your public, other public entities, and besides your regional housing council partners, which really need to be in the mix as well, but also port, anybody that can, can help with land and, and cares about affordable housing, workforce housing, et cetera, major employers, the port, the school district, et cetera. So you'll be hearing more about that. And then we really need to, my comment there, you might have seen, yes, the regional housing council partners really, this is much better done as a regional set of strategies, but don't let that slow you down, because I think you can show the way, you already shown the way by doing this, by, by funding this study. So don't let that slow you down for Olympia and our residents. Common threads, affordable housing, of course, has to be integrated. I kind of said that with, with missing middle thing, so in missing middle, we thought of maybe more rentals? No, no, things can be, can be put forward in, in, again, the townhouses, the multiplexes, et cetera, can be for affordable homeownership too, but it's gonna take some pushing to do that. And so that's, that's really key. And then limited capacity is one of the biggest challenges for the nonprofits that are doing this work, and so that, that really needs to be upped as another role that the city or regional partners could do. And then the way you pushed and worked with the Boulevard project is a key model, and you, you did that with Habitat, but I would also add the private sector into this too. And meeting with some of the private sector folks, they, they have a passion for overcoming this issue as well, so. And then it's a long-term viewpoint. It doesn't, doesn't, doesn't take, it's not gonna be very quick. It's just gonna have to be steady and strong and over time. And then we actually made a connection at the Housing and Washing Conference with the Black Homeownership Initiative, which is super aggressive and excitingly organized across the board, a whole lot of facets. And they, we had one meeting with them, and they are interested in looking at how they might be able to move down to Thurston. They're already in, they're already in, in Pierce. So that's something to look at, but it's also something to learn from, so. Here's a little drawing I did that kind of puts those pieces together. I'm not gonna try to explain that, but you have it in your notes, and it's, it's a one-pager a picture. So here's our priority actions, and we had to, we had to really kind of pick, pick the priority ones. There's still, I don't know, it's maybe 16 or 17 in here. They, the numbering is, is a little weird because, because I wanted to confuse you. No, actually, it's, it's weird because I wanted you to be able to follow along in the briefing document that has more information on it, so I kept the numbers the same. And Krista really pushed me to make sure we have less, less slides, so we, we're, no more, no more than three. I wanted to give you that.
Great job.
Maybe it was there, I don't know. But anyway, so these, there's, so we have like five sections in there, and one is, the first one is engaging all sectors. I've kind of gone over that a little already, but again, I can't underemphasize the, or can't overemphasize the need to get the private sector on board. And I think it's a real opportunity. You work so well with your regional partners, you know, the other local governments, but not, and, and with the nonprofits, but not enough with, with the private sector. So we really need to work that. And then there's, already said, the port. You know, the Olympia School District, they have a lot of surplus land. They might even have more coming up. So, and I, I know out where I live on 26, there's a big, at least a 10-acre slot over they took down John Rogers School. There's other land on the east side, or on the west side that I understood is being looked at. So that, that's something to look, to look at. You also want to think about things like, maybe anytime we look at parks, there could be some affordable housing. Again, Boulevard is a model of that. Maybe that could be a norm. Aggressively, by the way, Sam's standing here. I told him to just push, push me out of, I want, I want him to push me out of the way where he wants to say something, so, or tap me or something. Aggressively pursue office conversion. That's something that city staff's already looking at. We have a lot of offices here. We gotta, we might be able to have some conversations with Department of Enterprise Services about what, you know, what might be available, not state-owned even, but privately-owned, but they, that's, there's, there's resources there for that. So I think that's something, there is one possible project, we understand, and that's exciting, so. And then grow the capacity and authority of the Regional Housing Council. And I, the one thing I want the council to see, I'd, I'd love if they would hear about this, I'm willing to make that presentation too, but the, up in Tacoma, they have a, a public development authority that they created a number of decades ago, but it's coming on, it's, and we, we heard glowing reports from their community development and program director up there about it, and it's something to look as a model. I don't think you should necessarily go down the road of setting one up, but it could be a learning for the Regional Housing Authority. And again, the private sector is very involved in that. They're on it. So that's, that's something I'm glad to talk more about. As far, acquiring land, this is one of the key things the city can do. Again, you proved it with Boulevard, you've proved it with some of the other projects in town for rentals. So we need an updated, buildable or actually developable land would be the more proper word. And that's, we need, you need an inventory, you need to know for everywhere in the city what's available. And it's something I think the, you know, various ways of getting that done internally or with the planning, planning group, what's it called, you know, the Regional Planning Council?
TRPC.
Whatever they're called. They, they could do that, and they've done things like that. And then aggressively assemble that land. It's something like every year, you should buy, be buying land and then creating a pipeline for homeownership, but also for rentals. Again, I don't really want to separate that, but land's the best thing you could, you could find. And then engage those other entities, and I think I've beaten that one down. But I think having some serious talks, some of the new port commissioners are interested. The, I think the, like I said, the school district, those are the two. Lot is a possibility, so. Increase supply and production. So again, it's, just like in rentals, it's about supply and production as well. And so this is where we need tools for both the nonprofits and maybe some other players to do that. And one really good idea they recommend is a pre-development fund, and that's where, in my involvement with nonprofits, they don't have the ability or expertise just right off to, to kind of look deeply into a project, and they need to find, they don't have that expertise on staff often, or if they do, they're busy building something now. So that, those funds could be used for everything, for grant applications, to inspections, environmental review, et cetera, et cetera, and the other things listed up there. There's some good examples of that. Again, they're doing that in Tacoma really well. There's some organizations, impact capital list, and other resources that could be brought on, but it's something the city could fund.
And this would be, these would be short-term loans, so they'd be high-risk loans, right? That's, you're, you're carrying this risk, which makes it easier for the nonprofits, but because it's short-term, if you were to capitalize a pretty modest loan fund, that would get revolved many times over and over, because all of that, all of that financed money then gets bought out, financed out by the actual permanent financing.
So it's really a revolving loan fund. That's another thing I didn't clear up. Yeah, so that's, that's the good thing about it. You can really make some things happen, and eventually you'll get your money back as things get funded. And then the, lowering the cost for identified low moderate income housing homeownership projects is really important, kind of like what you did with ADUs. So look at that, that. One of the biggest issues for projects is, is infrastructure costs, or some state funds that the city staff have applied to before, but maybe just looking at ways to kind of bolster that and, and do more of that. So that's, that's, that's something to look at. Lot splitting is in the mix too. I noticed the House, one of the top three bills they passed right away, and our members are both cosponsors in the House, a lot-splitting bill that would actually increase the, you know, like the missing middle bill, it would give the city the power to just lot split. And so that's another way to get more homeownership, because that way you can split up existing lots and, and people can own them, so. And then the other thing is, we wanted to mention the manufactured house, tiny houses, movable modules, that's another resource. I mean, especially manufactured, there's a lot of, I want to call them new wave manufactured housing that is, can be green and, but it also can be, you know, it's not, it's not your, what the old school of manufactured housing, and that might be one of the, some of the cheapest ways we could do it. The city could put together a project with that. So that's something Sam especially has a lot of expertise in, and, you know, we could, we could do some perform on that. And then this starter house ordinance, now this is one of my favorite ones. Look at it like ADUs, but make it about starter homes and bring together the private sector partners to kind of work some deals, and maybe, maybe it comes down to some land deals. You could still put a covenant on it to keep it low income, but, you know, this, this could be a really exciting possibility, I think. And it could be a decreasing impact fees, you could set some standards for what the starter homes would look like, you know, whether it be square footage, or cost, or whatever, materials, and then you kind of, kind of work it from there. And then you kind of, kind of work it from there. So. Okay. Besides supply, then increasing the number of low and moderate income households that are homeowners. And so one thing that we don't have here is any kind of organized way that people can get information about how to buy a house, how to save, how to fix credit, how to, how to prepare for homeownership. And some communities have a lot more bolsterous set of organizations that do this. I think the United Way in Pierce County funds those, for instance, with partners like Goodwill and Sound Outreach and other organizations. So there's ways to organize it more strongly. And it's part of the pro, the project to HUD that, that staff wrote and submitted. And who knows, maybe we'll get funded this month. But it, that, that's a big part of it. And it's creating a network of, and marketing it to people. People don't know about the resources that are available now, and they're not linked. So different state-level organizations like the Home Ownership Center and the, the Finance Commission offer these programs. They're all online. There might be some phone help, but it's not organized or marketed down here. And you, you need somebody organizing that. And so it could be through RFP to a nonprofit or to another, or even a private entity to do that. It also links up the, the lenders. So. And then there's just capacity building for the nonprofits that are doing homeownership. Again, we actually only have a few here. Obviously, the Land Trust is very small and starry-uppy, but, but they, they have some ambitions and I, I'm involved in that. So I happen to know we just put a, a contract for a six- or a three duplexes in, in Tumwater. So they're coming on. It'd be great if a Boulevard project was happening every year. That would be my, my vision. So. And then, okay, here's another really good innovative idea that actually wouldn't cost you that much. Maybe some political pain. But developing ordinance and adopt a right of first refusal law. And you've, I know, I think some of you know about this and you've heard about it before and supported it. It's, it's actually something I was happy to see. It's not just a few big progressive cities doing it. It throughout Maryland, counties and cities, some smaller than Olympia are, have a, have a, a right of first refusal law. And it's, it's a great model. You can pass it. You could start, we recommend passing it, starting it with like a tenplex or bigger, but you could go down if you want. And it's a way to see what the action, and it gives, it gives the, when a, when a seller, and this is another why, reason you have the rental registry, thank you, because then you can communicate to landlords about the law, but also help them understand this might be something that's, that's a good idea for them. Might be a way to save renter, realtor fees for a search process and all that kind of stuff. So it, it basically gives the tenants the right to purchase. And you need to have, they need to have resources to do that, but that could be found out through the open market. So that's another good idea they recommend. You want to say anymore about that?
No, that's good.
Okay. But now.
Oh, sure.
You're going to do these things.
Yeah, okay.
So these are, go ahead.
So we put together a couple pro formas that we sent out. And then this is, this is a theoretical project where I underline different ways that the city made it possible, right? So we're talking about a forty-unit existing apartment building, probably built in the eighties or nineties. Not in the downtown core, but definitely within City of Olympia city limits. So imagine you have an opportunity to purchase law passed. The residents have the right to purchase it because the city passed that ordinance. They were able to be assisted by a non.
Thanks, Jerry. Talk.
Can I just, can I just yell?
Our, our city manager at work.
Thank you. So they, they're, they're going to receive assistance from a nonprofit that's gotten capacity building support also approved by the City of Olympia. In this case, it's going to be an acquisition and rehab. They're going to have an eighty, or they're going to have a blanket mortgage for this limited equity co-op that's going to have the amount above the eighty percent loan-to-value guaranteed by a city guarantee agreement. They're going to have down payment assistance for the individual shares. There's going to be pre-development work done by a city-sponsored pre-development fund. The vacancy risk for the entire project has been mitigated by the city-supported Home Ownership Center's list of candidates and their homeownership education program. From the resident's perspective, if we imagine these are like one bedrooms, we've got two adult household. They decide to move in there. They have an occupancy agreement that gives them the right to live there for as long as they follow the rules and pay the carrying charges. So there's no getting, you know, displaced whenever the landlord decides to, because the co-op is the landlord. So their share price is forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, which is kind of tagged to about ten percent of what a down payment, or ten percent of what a home purchase would be. But they qualify for fifteen thousand dollars in down payment assistance. They live there for ten years. They decide to move out. They sell their share for thirty-six thousand eight hundred, because they're not going to recoup that down payment assistance, right? That goes back into the pot where it came from. Over the ten years they lived there, about two hundred and thirty dollars a month, if you just do a straight average, went towards their, their share, like equity, right? So that's just savings that they've got that's now their money. Also during those ten years, because the co-op has no incentive to raise carrying charges more than the, the rise in costs, and since like seventy percent of their costs is debt service, which is just flat and doesn't go up, their actual carrying charge or rent has gone up one and a half percent every year, as compared to the broader market that's gone up seven percent every year, which seven percent looks scary, but is actually a lower number than we've seen in some recent years. So over ten years, that adds up to thirteen thousand dollars in savings. So because they've lived there for ten years in this place that they can't be kicked out of unless there's good cause, they now walk away with more than fifty thousand dollars in assets that they didn't have before and would not have had if they had been in a similar rental situation. And all of this, starting with a carrying charge that is affordable for a household of two at eighty percent AMI.
Great. And we'll have time to get into some questions soon, because we're almost done. And we partly, we did these to kind of show how this can be done. In fact, I love this co-op building one, because they're building, I think it's a sixty or seventy unit one in South King County. An organization called Homesite is doing it. It's a great organization and it's part of the Black Home Ownership Initiative. But it's something, again, that could be replicated here. And so. Okay, here's, here's something that, this stuff will cost money. So I wanted to put some revenue options in. So the, the, pass, I recommend you pass a property tax levy lift this year, just so you're ready to go for future years. And I know you have other needs for that as well. Also, I would look at running a property tax campaign dedicated to homeownership. And that would get the attention of the voters. I want to give you our, sometimes I think of our sister city up north, Bellingham. They passed in the last fourteen years, two property tax levies, in the last eight to ten years. And they did that with a home fund. So they have a home fund. They passed it before we did. They were actually a model we used when we, when we organized to pass it here. And they, yeah, they, they passed a property tax. So that's something to look at. And of course, there might be a pot, yeah, I'll talk about the REIT later. And then explore looking at your BNO tax rate and to create a affordable housing fund or a homeownership fund as well. And that's another idea, idea I got that is something to look at. There was some feeling, I don't want to name any names, but one of your top managers, not in the housing group, suggested that's a possibility that, to look at, because it's low. And at the state level, I know you're paying attention to that. The, there is, the, the REIT bill is, is, is moving, at least in the House, but it doesn't include a local option right now. And partly I understood from Nick Federici that it's because of the, the, the fact that Department of Revenue doesn't know how it could do it locally with the, with the, you know, members going to hit higher income than, higher, you know, higher, higher income sales, or higher property sales and not lower ones. So it's, there's going to be a, some study money provided then, and that maybe that would come back. So. Also condo laws are continuing. I've heard a lot about them when I met with the master builders. Continue to be an issue for condos. And it's a lot about litigation that, you know, the trial lawyers like it. The insurance industry likes it. That's something to get AWB and your fellow cities to push, to push to change. Anyway, and then maybe there's other ones too. So what will SaaS look like? This is probably rah-rah stuff, because you guys are in the business of trying to make SaaS, but it's all, all hands on deck. All sectors, et cetera. I've probably said that a lot. But, and, and also it, it really needs to be looked at as, in the picture with rentals and homelessnessers too. And so I don't think that's anything you wouldn't realize. And then set some goals for it. So have some stretch metrics. Really try to make something happen to build on what, what Boulevard is going to do. And then the idea would be have a, have a pipeline of projects. And I would say have a, a pipeline of individuals that known, are on a path to homeownership. I was really impressed at, it was like a three-hour set of workshops at Housing Washington. And folks from the Black Home Ownership Initiative, it's people that work with people to get them homeownership ready, said, you know what, give me somebody, I can, over, over one or two years, I can get them ready. You know, fixing credit issues, preparing savings, looking at all the different options. I mean, it's something we can do. And we, so we just, we just need to have that pipeline. We need to have some locally invested folks here doing that. So. And that's the end.
I would add one thing, just about the funding. I think that if there isn't going to be a way to raise revenue, then the question needs to be looked at as to whether or not more funds can be moved from the general fund. Because there really is not a lot of money going into homeownership in the City of Olympia right now. So if you're not raising money, I think examine other places where it could come from.
So, questions? And also, but also, we definitely want to hear what some of your priorities are as well. And Chair Danny might want to hear them too, for me, so.
Yes, thank you, Paul. So actually, yes, at this time, I'm gonna, before I open it up for comments, I'm going to turn it over to our Chair of Land Use, Councilmember Madron.
Chair, Chair Danny? Yeah, and I just wanted to give a little bit more context as to, you know, why we're looking at this, this work. And last budget session, the Land Use and Environment Committee actually asked to have some money in here to hire some folks to study this issue of homeownership for us, because we have goals around homeownership in our housing action plan. You know, particularly, you know, how, how, how we can partner with Land Trust, have tenant opportunity to purchase, partnering with developers on low-income homeownership projects. But we don't really have those tools in our toolbox yet. So that was the ask of, from the Land Use Committee to the council in the budget was to have some funding to be able to bring some folks on who could do this research for us. It's a really tough nut to crack, but it's a really important one, because one of the things that we recognize is a lot of our housing work is bringing more rentals onto the market, which is important. You know, we need all types of housing on the market, but homeownership is really, is, is a big missing piece of the puzzle for us in, in, in terms of what the city is doing around our, our housing goals. And so, you know, the ask of, you know, Paul and Sam, sorry. I work with somebody else with the last name Green in my day job, and you kind of look like him, so I have to keep it straight in my head. But, but the ask here is, some of the things that they've researched, our staff can take it and run with it. And like, you know, there are some easy things that they, easy, there are some more simple things that they can start looking for funding for, you know, putting together some kinds of strategies. But there are other things that are in this report here that are a little bit more complex. Tenant opportunity to purchase, you know, do we want to pursue something like a PDA? Starter home ordinance. So what we're hoping to get out of this meeting tonight is some direction to the Land Use Committee, so that when we have these guys back next month, they can do a little bit deeper digging and that we can refine some, some of the more challenging things. Where do we want to focus our energy? So that's the ask for this evening. Yeah. And I, I welcome all the questions and discussion that you all have for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. Councilmember partially followed by Councilmember Vanderpoel.
First, I love this. This is great. Especially you got me at the one percent increase and two hundred and thirty dollars a month going into savings. You know, that's something that this could provide, you know, and your model, I think it's just fantastic. Just explaining the laugh is that council, two weekends ago, spent a whole Friday afternoon talking about our budget and revenue streams. And so the giggle was, we've talked about some of this. And the Finance Committee, which is separate than Land Use, obviously, is going to be tackling some of this. So we do have one of the Land Use Committee members on finance. So I'm hoping there can be some crossover conversations when we get there in terms of what are we looking at and the impact of the budget in the general fund and so forth. Because I love it, but we need to fund it. And that's sort of my brain where we're going. And I want to find a way, should we go to, back to the voters, that we include projects like this that will come out of Land Use, so that we make sure that we adequately ask for the correct amount if we have to go to the voters. I, I'm, I would say that looking at all these options and reading through this, I would be saying, Land Use, you guys are the experts. I'm open to a lot of these options. I particularly like the office buildings, which we're already going to. I like the idea of a land survey to what's open and vacant in our community. I don't know if we've started that, or if we need to get a little chunk of money to get the funding on that, or what that looks like. I love the idea of getting a pipeline of renters, because a lot of renters do not know that this is going to be coming down. And you do need to prepare people. You need to help them, months out and years out, start reducing their credit rating and looking towards how do they budget. And just teaching them budgeting, so that they can start to do this appropriately. So yes, and I will take any other thing that Land Use comes forward with. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderpoel, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I will say that this is chock full of great ideas. The LMI, homeowner, homeownership models, cooperative land trusts. This density meets working-class idea is a really great idea. Like I spent my Saturday evening reading through this, nerding out over all these great ideas. I mean, it has a myriad of great ideas in here, right? The variation in like models, again, beyond the, you know, co-ops, land trusts, shared equity condominiums, right? These are things that I, I think are, would be a great way to diversify our housing stock and kind of allow us to have more than just renting and then owning a single-family home. But really, almost like the owner, homeownership missing metal in a lot of ways. And so with that said, I do have a few questions. When, when you were doing this study, did you find anything around public housing development around bonds? I noticed that you mentioned revolving home fund.
Well, that's another thing I didn't mention that I could have. Except the Housing Authority, which Councilmember Cooper sits on the, the board of, they have the ability to do bonding, and they don't do that. They've never done it here. Of course, they're not as much in the homeownership game, but they could be. And some other housing authorities around the country have, have gone into that. But, so bonding, yes, bonding is a possibility. Bonding, now, some of you know better than me, bonding costs a lot. And you give a lot to Wall Street to bond. And so you, the bigger, like with the home funds around the state, King County bonded theirs, but they, they have hundreds of millions of dollars in, you know, annual tax money coming in. For, for us here, it's a little bit of a dance, but bonding would be a way to quickly assemble. But it's just, I think it's hard to do for a smaller city.
Okay. I do have a question about starter homes that came up a few times in there. Do you have an, an example of what that would look like in a more moderate density model?
Like physically a starter?
Yeah, yeah. Because a lot of starter homes have been traditionally single-family, smaller homes.
Well, Boulevard is going to do that.
Okay.
It's going to have townhomes and some double-layered ones. And yeah.
Okay.
Some of the starter homes we were looking at were the same in footprint as some of the ADUs that are being built, right?
Okay.
So very equivalent to that, like.
Okay.
A thousand, nine hundred square foot, a thousand square foot.
Yeah, because that's kind of part of it too, is meeting that density so that you're not. not, you haven't used as much space.
And it's also cost effective when you're building, say, I mean, actually, I grew up in Philadelphia and row homes were the norm in a period of time for working people and, yeah.
And I do agree with that. As long as you don't take down the third wall, you should be fine. Yeah, so I, I actually have a couple other questions about this. So lowering the cost came up a few times in there, right? You said state laws can help with that a little bit and state funding, because a lot of that is that material, right? And when you look at the triangle development study, there's, we can do more environmentally friendly development through like manufactured wood instead of concrete, but there's an offset to that, there's a cost offset. And so I'm thinking about also like traditional zoning and revising our code. Do you have any recommendations, like hard recommendations of what we can do on the local level to kind of reduce that cost of development?
Well, for a starter home, and this is where I understand enough about your municipal finance limitations in our state, but impact fees are a big chunk of money for us, any kind of development, except we've taken them off, taken 80% off for ADUs. So that was the model I was looking at. There's a cost to the city, like what Councilmember Parsley said, but it's something to look at. And that, that's the number one, infrastructure. I looked at a cottage development with a partner friend up in, near Lions Park and to bring the, and it's on, it's a couple acres right there by Lions Park. It's on septic still. We would have to do a cottage development and they're looking at this still, him and Kaczuk's family, actually. But, but they, it would cost $150,000 to move the sewer down half a block. And so that's a lot of cost, sidewalks, et cetera, things like that. So looking at some deals on that for targeted projects is a possibility too.
Thank you, that's all I have. I can't wait though for it to come to Land Use.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you so much for all of your work. And what an engaging presentation. Lots of great ideas. I really love that, you know, as, as much as you're both stressing all hands on deck and then, and you know, working across private, public sectors, nonprofit. You can see that reflected in all of your different ideas here. I think you're really not taking anything off the table and I really appreciate that. As well, I got a good giggle in a few times throughout this presentation. So there's a comedic element, I don't know if you two are recognizing that happening here. So I really appreciate that. So with that, I don't have anything that, in your presentation, that screams out to me, no, we should definitely not do that. Admittedly going back, going out to the public and asking for more money to do something in a state that is really regressive, that's not always, ever going to be my favorite. With that though, some things that I sort of, I guess some themes that I sort of navigate towards, if that would be helpful, is I agree with the conversation that's kind of already been had here is that looking at assessing like what land is out there, what space is open, right? Whether that's office and especially if the city owns a property. But then also even if we don't, what, what land is out there? And then I really like this idea of kind of, and we've already done it as a city, but changing like what we think, or sort of not changing, but like challenging what we think of as a home, right? And so love that you're talking about movable ADU units. You know, in my dream, it's not, it's just DU, there's no accessory, like I can just have a tiny home and that would be great. But, so that townhouses, condos, just sort of alternative, but places that people would actually want to live in, of course. Yeah, I really, really gravitate to those ideas. I think topo is, or topo is a very, I think it's a little contentious, but I think people also don't understand it as much. So I think when something new and that people don't understand as much, it sounds really radical and I don't think it needs to be. So that's something I'm interested in. The lot splitting, that also sounds kind of radical, but, but I am, I'm kind of intrigued by that. I'd love to learn more. And then also with the condo split, I saw that a few slides earlier, it was, hey, what can we do to advocate at larger levels of government to change this, the law? There's been kind of some conversation about this idea that there's like this big liability for developers to create condos and I don't want to say it's not true, but I do, I've heard conversation about, you know, on, on kind of both sides of, is that really the case? And I would love to just know more information about it. We also heard from a council colleague here that it actually, that law might have been in place for consumer protection. So, so I think it would just definitely behoove me. I'm not sure any other council members just understand that more. So I wonder if that there's a little bit of debunking any myths out there on any, on any end. And then the last thing I'll say is, do you have some recommendations for how to really tell the story to, especially to private folks? Like what's in it for them? Why would they want to do this? Why would they not want to just keep on, keep on keeping on, right? And, and certainly there's a level of care, but I remember having a conversation with a local developer and architect firm and they were really, they were really honest with me, which I really appreciate. They said, hey, you know, we're not in the business of subsidizing housing. I, all right, that, that's fair. So I would love, even if it's not today, but any thoughts on that? How do we, how do we do that?
I somewhat got inspired because meeting with the, the Master Builders Public Affairs Committee, which is a wide ranging group, you know, you may have had an interview for them for, I don't, I don't know, in the past for political stuff, but they, but the point is they had some members there that really said, look, I really, and they talked to me afterwards, I really care about this, I'd love to be part of the solution. I think there's enough member builders or regular folks who, they care about their community, they care, they see what's going on, they know how terrible it is to, how expensive it is to not just build, but to buy in any, even existing. So I think there's folks out there, we'd have to find them. It's not going to be y'all come, but we wouldn't, you know, but finding, finding firms, there's up and coming firms of some young folks that I've run into that also care about this stuff. But it's still going to be expensive, that's the problem. I mean, some of the alternative building stuff because it's not the scale, you know, we're still building stick, you know, it, it, it's something we can't affect as much here, but we could, we could look at some options. And then Sam really is promoting the idea of, you know, kind of new wave manufactured housing as an alternative to, it'd be cheaper. So, but yeah, I think there's folks that care about it, you know, something we could look into, I'd be willing to, yeah, be involved in that.
Thanks, I really appreciate that. And I believe that they're out there. I'm not convinced that I know all of them. Though there's got to be, like be on heart, right? Which is great, but also like why does it have a business sense for them? And I think that it does, I just think that we could use help with that story and making this out. So thank you so much.
Can I respond really quickly? Just that goes back to the earlier question about like, what are the regulatory and fines and permitting costs that we could reduce? Because right now it doesn't pencil for most, you know, developers to build a single small home in, on the east side neighborhood. But if we were able to make the costs lower for a starter home ordinance or something like that, then it might all of a sudden make it pencil again for some of the smaller construction outfits.
Yes, that's a very fair point. We've got to do something to incentivize this type of development.
I would also, it's probably, but you know, Leonard is pretty smart on all this stuff too, so I would engage his department as well in it, so.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I'm excited about the progress on this study and, and excited about lots of the things. I mean, I hope that you keep a lot of the threads going through, through Land Use. The, the ideas of the revolving pre-development fund, I think is, is huge. And, and I appreciate the, the general call for creating capacity building and education sort of opportunities. I think that's, that's one whole stream that's pretty easy to do. And that, I mean, not, not, it's easier to fund. The, and I have a couple of questions that you don't necessarily have to have answers now, but if you could consider them as you're working to the final report. The, the first one is, we, there was several mentions of the city acquiring property and then, you know, making below market price or gifts or whatever the land. So far for the rental housing, we have required a deed restriction that requires permanent affordability on that property. So if it were a multifamily co-op or it was single family homes, how would you, how would you carry that requirement if, if we were to subsidize the land?
Yeah, great question. So a couple other ways that you could do it, with a limited equity co-op, you could have an asset stewardship clause that says that the co-op basically doesn't have, if it were to dissolve as a cooperative, any sort of remaining proceeds after paying down debt, you know, couldn't go to anyone's benefit, right? So, and because they're limited equity cooperatives, people don't get any incentive from liquidating the assets. So really, nobody's going to vote to, you know, sell it back into the private speculative marketplace because they'll just lose their affordable housing, but they won't be able to cash a big check at the end of that, right? So you can, you can lock that in with an asset stewardship clause built into the cooperative. And then the other tool that's, you know, here and is really effective for both limited equity cooperatives, but could also be effective for single family properties is the land trust, right? So you put the land trust in it, it owns it, it's got a whole, a whole slew of internal mechanisms that prevent it from putting that land back into the speculative marketplace.
Yeah, and then, and again, I just wanted to point out that you all did a great job, or your team did, of negotiating that with, with the Boulevard project. So that's going to be Habitat here never did, shared equity. So that means the land is owned by the nonprofit in perpetuity and you can put that kind of clause, you know, on, on, like you do with rentals, with, in that, in that way. So that the cost can only go up so much. The homeowners, they can still own their house and they can pass it on and, but, but then when it go to sale, it, it's value might, might be limited over time through a formula. Or it's sale, sale, you know, sale price.
Sure, and this, this is a comment leading into a question as we're, we're talking about these, the costs and I'm thinking about that, that sort of pro forma, that model of the, the multifamily building that, you know, first, any of the subsidizing development costs that we do, you know, has either a cost to less infrastructure or it's, it's passed on to everybody else. And so that, that passing the cost on makes me think about, in your model, insurance and taxes, how, how those are managed. And I'm thinking particularly about, I spent several years working with condo liability contractor who fixed failed envelopes and rotted decks and it was a, a very unwelcome bill to the homeowners association, right? So if you've got moderate income or low income people, how do they each pony up $50,000 to do an envelope repair on their building? And that also makes me wonder about advocating for the repeal of the condo liability legislation at the same time as trying to get lower income people into multifamily. So it's kind of a rant there, but.
Well, so going back to the first question, one of our recommendations was that any land that goes through the city land banking does have that permanent requirements. And I think that should be, you know, institutionalized if, if you can. As for the question about major capital improvements, there's going to be blanket mortgage financing on any of these properties and that financer is going to require that there's a funding program to fund the replacement reserve. So I think, actually, one second. Yeah, this one, so the residents, part of their carrying charge would cover, and it's, it's pretty modest, it's $24,000 a year that would go into their replacement reserve for the first 10 years. But that's after the building has gone through over a million dollars in rehab costs. So it's going to start with brand new systems and that's why they're only paying $24,000 a year, so. And that's based on a relatively average per unit contribution to replacement reserve so they can upgrade and fix major systems.
Thank you for bringing all this and, and bringing it into the realm of the possible for us. I'm, I'm excited.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you, Paul and Sam. I think the hardest part about this is going to be keeping it all going, given how hard we are working and not wanting to create another committee or not able to replicate our staff. So I, one of the things I'd love, I'd love to ask for in your final product, and maybe we can talk about this at Land Use a little bit, is some sort of feasibility scoring that helps us prioritize based on feasibility and cost and return on investment.
Okay.
Something like that. Or just put them in ranked order of priority. I'm, I'm really enjoying this conversation and the thing that I'm sitting here doing in my head is creating a ballot measure to bond for capital construction. And that's not something that I've thought of until today in this conversation, but if you think about it at the scale of, you know, like three buildings over, I think we're allowed to do seven years, is that, maybe I'm wrong. But there's a, a limited time window on capital bonding. No, actually, we can go out quite a bit further than that. But so if we bond based on a pro forma for two or three buildings over a cycle to create the revolving loan fund, we should then be able to recapitalize ourselves from the same dollar over a shorter period of time based on the way you're, you're talking in. And so if we did something like that with the Cooperative Development Center and the land trust in a partnership with the city, you know, I think that's the kind of thing our voters want from us. Like they want something that clean. We can build 120 units over 10 years or whatever, you know, whatever that ends up being and we're asking you to fund it and it, it actually would be probably the smallest ask that we've made of our voters in a long, long time to get a, a pretty huge return on investment. So that's just where my mind is sitting in this space. And then the other, other thing that's hot on my head is, I think that we should bring together developers who have done office conversion to housing. So we have one in our community, there's inklings of the possibility of another coming about, but I know there's been more up north and, and in the south. So if we could like do a, a workshop or a conversion summit or something, just to bring resources to the community to have that conversation and get people thinking about it, I think it would just get, you know, a great opportunity to tell some of this story even in front of developers.
Let me just say something real quick on that, Jim. The, actually, your housing staff are part of a national, under the NYU, New York University Furman Center, they're looking at that issue, right? So they, they also have some other national inputs on that too, that they'll be able to use, but I think the office conversion thing, it really makes sense. And the, one other thing I wanted to say too, just what you said, is that the other, we don't want to forget that the private sector funds most housing and there are some things the city could do, again, with cost, but they could have a loan guarantee program and that's kind of on our secondary list of possible recommendations. But actually Krista talked to finance and legal and it's possible to do, the problem is you have to hold the money, you know, in case things go awry. But it's a way to kind of inspire or help, help, help the private sector agree to do something like a starter home project. And the other thing I can't, I would say, I remember a lot of people low in my income are paying a lot of freaking money for rent. And, you know, a few years ago before the, the interest rate went up, they could have, if they could have gotten into a house, they'd be paying less. So there's still that, that, so that's why, that's why, that's why some stock mark, you know, for, for worse, the business community, the Wall Street's getting into housing, you know, because it makes money regularly. So we have to take that.
Can I, just with the loan guarantees, I do think it's worth taking a look at too because you might spend, let's say you put a million dollars to guarantee a million, a million dollar loan, like you can use that same million dollars to guarantee several loans because you have a very high likely, you know, it's very likely that not all of those loans will be bad and you'll have to cover the, the debt allowance for each of them. So that is one way that you could use one chunk of money, you know, to secure or to make possible many, many, many more dollars of financing coming from CDFIs or the private sector.
Thank you for that add on. I think that to me is also another thing that I've been pushing hard on our, our conversation is how can we put some of the cash that we're sitting on every day to work in a, in a better way? And, you know, something that's lower risk and allowable by law, that would be the conversation I would really like to have. We have a lot of cash that we're already managing on a daily basis and would imagine that that balance is, stays high enough. And I would imagine that that balance is, stays high enough that we could afford, if it's allowed, to do something like that, just within our cash reserves.
Councilmember Parshy.
Aaron's not in the room, but Jay, if you can help me, we're gonna be talking about at finance, our reserves and our funds and the policies. Can we put a side note on that?
So noted.
All right, so at this time, I'm gonna call for Darian Lightfoot, our Director of Housing and Homelessness.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Sam. A few things I wanted to add, just from what I've heard from all of your discussions. Just to replicate how we went about the rental protections work. Krista came to land use, you all heard the recommendations from the consultant, and then we've been chipping away at those over the past two years. We had the big bulk of adoptions to the ordinance in December twenty-twenty-two. Now we've been working on the, the registry, and then Krista's coming back to land use this week for a few more recommendations. So you could look at this, these recommendations in a similar way. What could we bite off now, what could we work on in the next six months and then move forward from there? So just to replicate that process. Another thing I wanted to share is because we've passed the MFT ordinance for homeownership, we've already had several calls from developers that says, I heard you're doing MFT for homeownership. How can I get involved? And so we're already seeing some return in our investment of, of adopting the homeownership ordinance with the MFT. We also heard Paul talk about the infrastructure support. And so Jacinda and I each submitted two applications to Commerce for the Connecting Housing and Infrastructure Program, CHIP, one for the two-two-eight Franklin and one for Boulevard. And so we're waiting to hear back on both of those applications. That will support infrastructure support for both of those programs. The last thing I wanna say, which is a bit sombering, is when we're hearing them talk about the Boulevard project, the Boulevard project, we need one of these a year. I just shared the news with you all last week that we did not receive a dollar from Housing Trust Fund for our Boulevard project, which has been told to us several times that it is like a leading innovative way that we're doing homeownership in this dense, creative space of a hundred and twenty units with, you know, many different tiers targeted towards seniors, and we still weren't able to capture funds from the state. And so, yes, we need one of these a year, but the one that we have that's a really full package isn't even receiving support from the state. So, you know, how we can press, how we can pressure legislators to figure out a way to have more capacity in our Housing Trust Fund for homeownership is going to really allow us to move this forward. And then the last piece is, as we are talking about the funding application for the pro homeownership study is through HUD, is that, that is, it was between one and ten-million-dollar request. And we requested ten million dollars, and that is a three-part request. One bulk of it is saying that we just conducted a study, and we would like money to implement the study. So if we receive the funding, it will be to implement what you heard tonight. Another third of it is for capital funding. So again, we can take those funds, look to capture, capture land, and then do manufactured home, bar, condo, whatever you feel would, would be best for those flexible capital dollars. And then the other foot, the other third was to better invest in the, the land trust. And so to build up the local capacity and to be able to have an organization that can hold the projects and that can really help us through this cooperative model. So to answer some of your questions on that. Do you have more to add? Okay, and Krista and I can answer any more questions, yeah.
Councilmember Madron.
I just wanna reflect back some of the things that I heard. But first, Mayor Payne, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do, but I, but.
Why don't, why, no, why don't you jump in and then I'll offer some of the reflections of what I heard?
Okay.
I just wanna make sure, a word in edgewise.
Thank you. So mostly, this is probably geared towards Paul and Sam. But before I get to that, I wanna acknowledge Krista, I'm so sorry, I wrote a note to call you forward first, and I glanced over it, but I wanna acknowledge that. And also, I wanna thank you for just rolling with it. And also, thank you for being the gatekeeper for death by PowerPoint. I appreciate that. So just a couple of questions. First around, I'll just start off at the top of, of what I think, you know, areas we should focus on. The first one being obviously land vacancies. We heard that quite a bit from the, from the members of the council. Through adaptive reuse of vacant office spaces, that, that type of thing. And, but also, I'm looking at one of the recommendations here to complete and update a development vacant lands inventory across the city. And, and one of the things, one of the notes here in that column is to track lots in foreclosure or with tax liens. So, you know, that makes me think of, you know, how ironic would it be if, if folks have, they foreclosed on their home, but now this is available for resale, right? Under this new opportunity. And so how are we connecting those dots? Or how are we gonna be monitoring that as just some food for thought, I guess? Because I'm thinking about what are the preventative measures we could be taking? First of all, to keep people in their homes. And if that is not successful, then how are we looking at those folks that have had to leave their home? And are we prioritizing them in terms of who needs to be housed, once again? And the other thing is, is, you know, ra, race and class are intentionally inextricably linked in our country, as we all know. And I, you know, I'm just really appreciative of the effort to work with this Black Home Ownership Initiative group. You know, obviously, the staff report is saying that about forty-five percent of black people in Thurston County own their homes compared to sixty-nine percent of white, non-Hispanic. And so for me, that is, speaks to our equity work that we are committed to here at the city. And so I would like to see some prioritization of, of those efforts to really start to think about how are we improving on those numbers? And one way to, you know, that sort of comes to mind in the discussion of land vacancies is how are we making sure that we're, as we're finding out the land that we have available, how are we gonna ensure that we're not unintentionally creating segregated areas of people around our city based on race and income? So those are a few of my initial thoughts, along with doing more work around incentivizing developers to, to get in the game with us, particularly around starter homes. And so, very intrigued by your loan guarantee program that you mentioned as an, as an incentive to do that. I'd be interested in hearing more about that. And then, finally, I'll just add, Councilmember Cooper had mentioned something about creating a group of folks that would come together. Under action step one, you have, under your suggested notes, to establish a multi-sector advisory group to support and guide the development of more equitable and inclusive homeownership via starter homes development model. So that sort of speaks, I, I think, a little bit to what he's talking about. And I know that that is, we're talking about creating another advisory group, right? But I don't think we're talking about doing that with us. We're, we're talking about doing that with people who, who are experts in this and who can make recommendations to us. And so those are my thoughts for now. Thank you. Sure. Yeah, I think that's right, and that's why I'm particularly interested in trying to do it around something more targeted, like starter home initiative, where you get the lenders and the builders and some architects, you know, something more concrete. But that's, that's really great. And the, the equity work is so critical. And, you know, I can't say enough about what this, this is a, this home, Black Home Ownership Initiative is big. They got banks, major banks, you know, they, it's, it's really well-organized. And it's a great model for us to even just take some of their techniques. They have, they have BIPOC realtors working with folks in Pierce County. That could, that could potentially come down here, you know what I mean? But even if they're not, it's the model they have. So there's a lot to be even learned, and they, they express a strong interest in, in engaging with us, so. Thanks, Paul. Councilmember Madron. Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Thank you, not, not, and not to belabor this too much, but I'm also tracking a similar model to what Paul described in LA. So they have a so, the, it's a partnership with the city and the United Way. They have a two-hundred-million-dollar social, social innovation fund. They're partnered with CDFI Banking, and they are essentially creating, helping black people build the construction company and then build the apartment buildings, and then placing people of color right off of coordinated entry into those units. And so the whole focus is on, on housing and long-term permanent housing for people of color. And so any kind of, any kind of opportunity we can have to learn more at a deeper level into that kind of program would be, I think, good for the whole, the whole region, not just the city of Olympia.
Councilmember Parshy now, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Just a, a note of partnerships, let's not forget our, our hospital corporations because Kaiser made a commitment nationally to be part of the housing solution, partly because their paraprofessionals needed housing, and that they felt that was preventative health. I believe Providence has done that as well, so let's make sure we get them in 'cause there's some potential money there.
All right, and thank you so much.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Councilmember Vanderpool, thank you for yielding, Councilmember Madron, I appreciate your patience.
I echo the need to make sure these aren't segregated housing. When I was a kid and I lived in Baltimore, most of it was segregated. And that's because of white flight, it's because of building the highway around the city. When we build these, I would like to, and I brought this up with some of my councilmates about the neighborhood centers, having an equity clause should be part of this. And part, what I mean by that, I, I believe that there needs to be community-centeredness to the housing, not just housing, but third places, places for people to go to and spend time with each other from different backgrounds. I really think that, that would be valuable.
And now, Councilmember Madron.
I have no problem yielding, I wanted to reflect the things I was hearing, and apparently we weren't done yet, so. So sometimes, sometimes when things come out of the Land Use Committee and come to the full council, they get bigger, which is great, because this is where a lot of the innovation happens. And so I think what our, our next step is, as a committee, is we can debrief this a bit on Thursday during the report section of our, of our meeting to, you know, to, the three of us can, you know, ruminate on this conversation and think about that, to give some clear guidance to Paul and Sam over there and our staff in terms of how we wanna shape this prior to our February land use meeting. But some of the things that I heard people mention several times over is, you know, vacant land inventory, office buildings, starter homes. But maybe they're not just single-family homes that we're talking about, tenant opportunity to purchase, revolving pre, pre-development loans, loan guarantees, capacity building, education. And so some of this also doesn't go to fin, uh, land use, it goes to finance, too. You know, of course, we'll work on shaping this down, 'cause we also wanna take, you know, bites that we can chew. As Darian said, like, you know, with the, with the, our work around rental housing, you know, we, we're, we're, we're putting our work out at the pace that we can do it. So, so we'll, we'll chew on this a bit, and we can, we can debrief a bit on Thursday. I do, one thing that I, I heard was a very clear ask for when this does come back to land use in February is developing some kind of feasibility scoring, like, you know, e, ease of implementation, cost of implementation, staff, resources, just so that we can get kind of conceptually, like, how, how could we, like, what, what is most feasible for us to advance? Where, where's the low-hanging fruit? Where's the stuff that's gonna require high-level investment that we need to kick over to Finance Committee? You know, where are the things, you know, how, how can we meter this work out in a way that is manageable? And also makes, makes the difference that we need to for our community. I also wanted to lift up that there was some specific potential partnership opportunities that were mentioned in the presentation around both the school district and the Port of Olympia. And those are two jurisdictions that we've said we've wanted to have meetings with this year. So I hesitate to make any asks of the school district at this point. But, you know, it's worth, it's worth talking about because they, they own land that is undeveloped in Olympia. But also, the port has some new committ, commissioners on it, and we've seen housing developed on Portland before. And so I think we could see that again, but maybe, maybe more tailored to, you know, some of the gaps that we're seeing in, in our housing system. So just wanna reflect back some of the things that I'm hearing, and we can, we'll continue this conversation, and you'll be seeing some more coming from, from the Land Use and Environment Committee in terms of what pieces we can move forward now, what's gonna take more time, but stay tuned.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron, and I really appreciate that summary. Councilmember Parshy.
I would, as the Chair of Finance, I would love if Land Use could prioritize the things that might end up back in our lap. As we're speaking about the budget this year, it could impact some of these conversations and what we do for revenue stream. So I know it's a, a big ask, but if you look at this and go, we want a revolving loan, or we want some issue with financial that's gonna impact us and our budget work, it would be great to at least say, hey, can you tackle these two topics?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, we, we do have a, a shared committee member in Jim Cooper there. One thing I neglected to mention myself, really, 'cause I started for, like, Putting Lasts, is, you know, the prioritization of racial equity. I'm really glad that you lifted that up, Mayor Payne, both in terms of access to housing, but also making sure that it's integrated throughout the community and that, that we're not creating pockets of where, where people don't feel like they're fully part of Olympia.
I knew you weren't gonna forget that point, because I was gonna say something to you after, but. But thank you. So any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you all very much for the presentation, we appreciate it, and very exciting work. We're looking forward to having you back soon. All right, so with that, that concludes our, our final business meetings, business item for the evening. So that last one had no action required, it's just a briefing. So we'll move on to council reports, and I'll start with the mayor's report. So just last Thursday, on the eighteenth, Law and Justice Council met for the first time this year. And we had a, a very robust discussion around member vacancies. So just putting it out there that we are looking for positions to fill on the Law and Justice Council that would be members to represent JBLM or Joint Base Lewis McCord and the Squawson Island Tribe and a few others. But those in particular, I think, are really significant vacancies that we have on the Law and Justice Council at the moment. Also, we voted unanimously as a council, once again, to have John Toonheim and Patrick O'Connor serve as Chair and Vice Chair, once again, of the Law and Justice Council. And lastly, on Friday evening, I had the privilege of attending the Bridge Music Project reception. It was very, very moving, I was there with Councilmember Gilman. And, you know, I, we were there for a reception to welcome Mr. Daniel Lewis from the Lewis Prize, which is a national organization that provides grant opportunities to a variety of nonprofits throughout the country. And the Bridge Music Project received a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Lewis Prize, which was incredible. And so I presented Mr. Lewis with the mayor's coin and showed our appreciation as a city for that. We were also there with Paul Simmons, our Director of the Parks Arts and Recreation. So very good way to go into the weekend, so, and that's my report. And I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, thank you to the HVAC gods. Sorry, it's been blowing on full the whole meeting, and I haven't experienced that ever in this building. So first I wanna say that I, that was an awesome conversation. It, it was, to me, just like the budget conversation we had on Friday at our retreat. It was, to me, just like the budget conversation we had on Friday at our retreat, and I just wanted to say it out loud, because anytime there's opportunity for us to, like, roll up our sleeves and discuss as a body, like, organically, I think we just are better when we do that, so. And then, I was telling my wife that we were having two art agenda items tonight, and she wanted me to pass on something. She works at the county in the atrium building, and she said that they have the coolest new program where the city is loaning art to a building that was completely empty with no art at all. And so, we have some pieces in the building and wanted to pass on that gratitude to Parks Arts and Recreation and the city for, for those, for loaning those pieces, so. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? All right, Councilmember Parshley.
I have only one thing to report, which is the first Finance Committee meeting of the year. We mainly covered two agenda items. The first one is a update on the fraud loss update, fraud loss update, update, whatever. For those who are not familiar, Councilmember, our new Councilmember, in 2022, due to an electronic transfer phishing, I guess, fraud that was perpetrated on the city, we lost nearly $320,000. We recovered about $250,000 of that, if I correctly remember, liability insurance. But we knew when it came to the accountability audit by the state, which happened this year, that we were likely to get a finding, which is something you don't necessarily want to see from the state. But, and we had our exit interview today, and they, of course, did give us a finding, and I'm kind of doing today's exit audit with the agenda for the Finance Committee, just to let you know. And they did say that, you know, this was a weakness in our system, that we weren't having enough oversight. They did like the audit, internal audit protocol that we put together. They did feel we could tighten it up a bit today, but essentially, we knew this was coming. They did appreciate the Finance Committee's openness and willingness to put together an internal audit, and that, the fraud loss response was adequate, as long as we tighten it up a bit. It does not affect our standard POURS, SMP rating, which is nice, because we don't want to do that. And we had ours, as a matter of fact, raised its long-term rating for the city's general obligation bonds from a double A to a double A plus, and if, that's excellent. The only city, was it Seattle was the only city that has a triple A in the state of Washington, so this is fantastic. And much like an individual's credit score, it's a reflection on the city's creditworthiness. And with a higher rating, the city receives more favorable interest rates on borrowing, just as we were talking about in the last, the part of the business meeting. And there are several reasons why we got an increase, which is important. They believe a growing and diverse economy base, sound financial profile, and stable financial performance, improved debit scores, and sound financial practices, conservative budgeting, and strong monetary, monitoring of budgetary and financial performance. So, way to go, Financial Department, those guys just rocked. And by the way, during the exit interview, I was super impressed with them. It's hard to hear when you get a finding, and their reaction back in 2022 and 2023 over this whole thing has been stellar. For me, the most important thing is, we all make mistakes, things happen, it's what you do about them that shows the true character. And I think our Finance Department has character, and they really stepped up and made the whole system better. The majority of our meeting was devoted to our work plan, and it was very robust. I was thinking it wouldn't take quite as long, but it was great. Let me just, some highlights of the work plan. It was mentioned repeatedly by Jim and I, Councilmember Cooper and myself. Councilmember Gilman will be joining us next month, on the second Wednesday of the month, that we need to make sure that our work plan is in conjunction and in taking into account all the retreat topics and desires by the council as a whole. We need to discuss budget stabilization, and we need to stay on top of it. We need, we talked a little bit, if there was going to be a levy, would we do a spring, winter election? We need to engage the community early. We heard that clearly during the retreat, we need to bring them in early. The executive team retreat is going to be in February, March, and they're going to hopefully help us get the why of why, of why, of our budget issues, and be able to help us going forward in our communication. We talked about revenue versus efficiencies, so can we improve our efficiencies and therefore decrease our expenditures? And then, Councilmember Cooper also brought up community polling, and potentially doing an efficiency and focus group early. Once again, the outline of the plan was shifted around based on what you all said in the retreat on Friday. And that should, this draft one is, I think, potentially done at this point, and I would love to share it out to the council before we put it into the package, just to get feedback that we got even close to what you guys talked about in retreat, or have the city manager talk about it in one-on-ones, one to the, before we bring it for a formal vote.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Parshley? City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, I just want to state that, right now, the plan is for all of the advisory committee work plans to be on the February 6th agenda, so as you finish them up, and feel free to send them around, we've got some time, a little bit of time early next week to do that work before they're in.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Just reflecting on the conversation we had earlier, Councilmember Parshley, it would probably be good to make sure that the space we have carved out for revenue is broad enough to include programmatic revenue, like, around the housing conversation that we just had. So, if you, maybe you and Aaron could look at that, I bet Councilmember Gilman would give a thumbs up, so that we can get that added before it comes to the council for approval.
Absolutely, and include climate work as well.
Okay, Mayor Protonwen.
Yeah, just a short public service announcement, and a little bit of, definitely related terror conversation here about housing. So, just wanted to flag for everyone, I believe all councilmembers received this in our inbox, but, you know, we also receive a lot of things in our inbox. But this one's pretty particularly exciting, so it's an event that is free to the public, happening at the Washington Center for the Performing Arts Black Box, right here in downtown, on February 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30. There is a free event hosted by the Community Sustaining Fund of Thurston County, and it's all about community land trusts. We'll have an opportunity to meet and have a Q and A with the Community Farm Land Trust, and then also the Thurston Housing Land Trust. And then they're also going to show two short films, or they're documentaries, so it should be a really fun night, really directly related to, I think, what's really on our, on our hearts and minds, as far as affordable housing in downtown, at least, at least one really good component of it. So I hope to see folks there. Thanks.
Any questions or comments for Mayor Protonwen?
Can you just repeat for myself and the public what night and what time?
Oh, yeah, sure. I know, I'll have to put my voice message protocol in place. Yeah, so this is going to be at the Washington Center for the Performing Arts Black Box, right in downtown Olympia. It's happening on February 7th, that's a Wednesday evening, from 5:30 to 7:30. Again, that's the Washington Center for the Performing Arts Black Box in downtown Olympia, 5:30 to 7:30 PM, February 7th, free to the public. Thank you.
You meant that voice message. Okay, Councilmember Gilman.
Good. Inter-City Transit met last week on the 17th, and we had, it was the first time in the years I've been on the board that we've had a presentation about their, they have a, essentially a Labor Management Committee that meets weekly, that's, they call it the Operations Communication and Policy Committee, but it's five operators, five bus drivers, people from each of the departments, and then the executive team. And it was nice to hear a description of the way that they workshop some ideas, they test new policies out on the line-level staff, and, and it also functions as kind of a big suggestion box, right? So, so that was really nice to hear. What's most popular topics to come from the people working are, can you trim those trees that I run into on a regular basis? The, you know, and, and then being able to negotiate, like, the bid process, how they, how they reallocate shifts every few months, and, and having those advanced conversations so that it doesn't either become totally top-down or very formalized in a lengthy process. So, anyhow, that was, that was nice to hear about. And we had a presentation on our initial plan for getting to zero emissions vehicles for heading towards carbon-free transportation. And the first piece of context that, for me, was really helpful, was imagine that this is a generational shift, and that while the infrastructure's expensive, it would be equally expensive if we were starting with fossil fuels today, and we were putting in fuel tanks and monitoring to hold diesel fuel hundreds of thousands of gallons, that would also be millions of dollars to put that infrastructure in. So it's, it's not that it's necessarily more expensive than the fossil fuel systems that we're using now, but it's that we're putting in place a whole infrastructure that we haven't had. We're, we're going to start, in 2024, we have five buses and a fueling station for fuel cell buses. We're part of a Washington State University moonshot kind of effort to look at hydrogen. So while there's still a lot of skepticism about whether we'll get to sustainable, low-carbon hydrogen, the technology is being developed, in the hopes that the, that the science comes along. So, so we're, we're jumping on that, and, and at the same time, we're putting in orders for three battery electric buses that will be delivered in 2026. So we're specking those out now. So we'll have both battery electric and fuel cell electric buses in the fleet in a couple of years, and start running them on routes and seeing how do they do on Harrison Hill? Can they make it to the Amtrak and back? You know, questions like that. And we're going to continue to buy a few diesel buses along the way, just as, as sort of hedging our bets. We're going to try both the current technologies and buy some more diesel-fueled buses, and, and hope that some other sorts of breakthroughs in either technology or federal funding come along, we're open to that. But this is, this is the orders that we're putting in right now. So, I'm excited that we've gone from a few years, well, just like the Climate Action Task Force, right? A few years of talking and planning, and to actually put orders in is very exciting, so.
It's a great update. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Vanderpool.
At any point, did overhead, I know, you know that question was coming, did overhead electric ever come up in the conversation, instead of just battery electric?
So, this is trolleys, like in Seattle, where the wires are running off of the electric wires. And we had that considered as part of the bigger study that we had a consulting group put together, but it was, it was not part of Wednesday night's conversation about these initial orders and vehicles. It's a, that's a whole nother infrastructure decision to try to claim a middle lane down the road and run power lines, so.
Okay, Councilmember Vanderpool.
Why bother turning it off? I don't have a lot to report. I had a briefing meeting this morning on the Regional Housing Council, which was great, and I can't wait for that tomorrow. And I can't wait for Land Use the day after that, so it's all housing, urban, urban stuff. This is all the stuff I, I am so excited about, so. There'll probably be a lot more next week, I'll say that.
All right. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? All right, Councilmember Madron.
You all might have heard at some point this evening that Land Use is meeting this week. I want to let you all know that we are meeting at 4:00 PM this week for a scheduling conflict, but we're also considering, is there some celebration from staff behind me over here? We're also, we're also going to be discussing our schedule for the year, and we're going to talk about scheduling at 4:00 PM for, for the year, just, I just wanted to share that, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it on Thursday, but just in terms of, like, easing the burden on both staff and councilmembers alike. But, but we will be meeting at 4:00 PM this week for listening public who might be, you know, interested to know that. Also, the Retail Housing Council is currently recruiting representatives for both the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the Homeless Services Advisory Board. So these are advisory committees that advise the RHC on the recommendations that we make to the county, on how dollars should be spent around homelessness and affordable housing. I'll forward the email to you all, so you, you have it if you think of anybody, there's specific identities that they're hoping to recruit for. So, for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, somebody who's an affordable housing lender, behavioral health or primary care provider, real estate broker, or someone who lives and works in Tumwater, and lives and works in Lacey. I said or, but it's actually and, they're looking to fill those slots. And for Homeless Services, a veteran advocate, behavioral health or primary care provider, disability service provider, or someone, and someone who lives and works in Tumwater. So I'll forward this to you all, so if anyone comes to mind, you can pass a little along. Applications are due at the end of the month, and that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? All right, City Manager Bernie.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Well, with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.